Appreciate everybody putting their cell phone on vibrator if you can. Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Costner?
Here.
Alderman Bud?
Here.
Alderman Greg?
Here.
Alderwoman Kathy Hope?
Here.
Alderman Morgan?
Here.
Administrator James Fincham?
Here.
Attorney Harry Hurst?
Here.
I'm sure that approval of the minutes of the previous meetings, they the regular session, April 9th, 2013, I have a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make the motion.
I have a second.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. TB, a special call meeting, April 25th, 2013, do I have approval of those meetings?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number four, a proclamation and recognition of citizens by the mayor. Have we got any recognition of city employees?
Yes, sir. Chief Schulz has that.
Okay.
It's not every day that you get the opportunity to bring positive attention to someone that so well deserves it. Our recipient from a police department this month has several hats that he wears throughout the day, and with Deputy Chief Fincham's assignment to the City Hall, he has also assumed the helm at filling in when I'm absent. This employee is a great employee. He never grumbles and growls, he just does what has to be done above and beyond what's expected of him, and I'm honored tonight to be able to present this plaque to Steve Hudson, the City Police Department.
Congratulations. Thank you for my words. Number five, communication for our city.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to report some good news. We have paid off our tax anticipation note two and a half months early that we borrowed back in the fall, and that led to a savings in interest of $2,268.78. So we have paid those monies back, and we did save that much in interest by paying it off early. One thing I'd like to talk to you about, I've talked to Turi about this earlier today, and I only got the final information together today with help from Rocky, and that is, we've been getting constant requests from department heads, from people who are interested in buying surplus property, when are we looking at having another auction, a citywide auction? And I've helped put those things on, and they are time-consuming, the logistics are horrible trying to get all the stuff in one location where people can look at it, and what we have found is that's getting to be a thing of the past. And what people are doing, what governments are doing now, is, of course, we're in the Internet information age, and what they're doing is they're selling this stuff at auction online. And there is an online site called GovDeals.com, and it is for government to go online and sell their stuff at auction. It's kind of the eBay of government. Of course, it's not on Door eBay, I was just trying to give you a reference point that everybody would be familiar with. Surrounding counties are doing it, and what I would like to do, I would like for us to do it. We've got a ton of surplus property, you can sell anything on it other than, I guess you could sell land, but I'm not talking about land, but like anything from old computers, police cars, trailers, vehicles, you name it, they sell it online at the auction. Of course, you put a minimum bid on it, and then it goes from there. And so, I spoke with Turi about this afternoon, because I only got the final information on it today. Rocky's worked very diligently on it, and I appreciate him, and he talked to the people today, they have a local, a person who's assigned to this region, that if you all opt to do this, they will come in and help set it up, will train everybody on how it has to be done, and then we can start just putting our stuff on there and selling it at auction and bring some revenue in. And it would save us a lot of time and effort, as far as, like I say, trying to get all the stuff into one centralized location, and then putting on an auction ourselves. And this could be an ongoing thing, if you can, it's there, all the time, whenever you need it. And I would like, I would like permission to do that. Now, Turi, when I ran it by Turi this evening before the meeting, I asked him, was that something I could do on my own, or would that need to be voted on? And he felt like it needed to be voted on, so...
I think James is correct. I think a motion, if the council wants to do it that way, I think we need to make a motion to give him the authority. We do need to, and James would like to do it, start on immediately, so...
Yes, because we have got a lot of stuff.
Yes.
Do we need some kind of copy of the program, or are you talking about doing it tonight?
Giving him the authority.
Giving him the authority.
Tonight, to go ahead and move forward with it and do it, if that's what the council wants to do.
So you're comfortable with that program?
Yes, Rocky, Rocky knows more about it than I do, but he's briefed me on it, and a lot of Knox County does, it, Washington County, a lot of the surrounding governments are using. We checked in to make sure it was reputable. It wasn't, it's not just something, it's something that's being used by surrounding them.
Vice Mayor, the city utilities does it as well.
Yeah.
The federal government does its well to cede property to the martial service, they put them on land.
I have a motion to suspend the rules and to vote on it.
I'll make a motion to suspend it.
I have a second.
I'll say.
Okay.
And this will suspend the rules to add this to the agenda tonight, that we can take it up.
Okay, I do. Thank you, I appreciate it. I think, which is going to be a lot of work.
We just need to vote this night.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Costner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Costner, yes. Alderwoman Kathy Hope?
Yes.
Alderman Freddie Greg?
Yes.
Alderman Kenny Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman John Bug?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. I think it will, it will help us get clear out this inventory, and it'll bring in some money, too. The budget, well, when I came in as the interim, my goal was to have a budget in on time, that's not going to happen. What we're going to have to do is, next month, I'm going to have on the agenda to continue operating on this year's budget, so we can move forward, actually something we have to do, a technicality, and I will get a budget together as quickly as possible. The numbers I gave you here tonight that I handed out, that's where we are on the, I got that, that's hot off the press at 3:00. And so, we've worked very diligently, the staff's worked very hard to be able to put those numbers in your hand tonight. That was something you asked us to do two weeks ago, and that's, I mean, that's how down to the wire it went, trying to keep tweaking those numbers and be able to generate that spreadsheet. What you have on that is strictly your revenue stream, and that is, that doesn't count like loans, grants, none of that's in there. All that is, is what you generate, your general revenue through it. And you can see the left, you've got the budget amount, the year-to-date, the projections are for May and June, and then you've got the difference out to your right, then if it's in black, that means we are over, and if it's in red, we are projecting it to be under. And of course, at the end of the day, we're projecting right now a $33,435 deficit in projected revenue, which is really not that bad when you take everything into consideration. But if the delinquent property taxes hadn't have been so great, we would have, and if the NUB had increased there in Lua, we'd have had trouble. But those two things...
That puts us on the mounds. I know one of them, but what's the other, on the mounds?
Which one?
Both.
Well, they're right here, they're...
Yeah, but the increase, what would you say?
Well, the...
108 on the NUB, and what was the other one?
The, on the delinquent property taxes, is almost $150,000 over. Well, we budgeted. Right, correct. Now, I spoke with Jeff Green, our tax attorney today, and he said that number will be similar next year, but I'm working on getting a hard number. I've called, I've had the girls call, I won't say I did. I had the girls call over to Peggy Lane's office and get some numbers from over there, and he told me how to calculate on that, and we're going to do that, and he said next year should be as good, if not better. But he said, then that's going to be the end of the line on it, because then they're going to all be caught up. And he said, the following year, you're going to, you're not going to get all that money coming in, but said you can count on it one more year in the delinquent. There's another thing in here, a couple, I've made some, I've got some color coding here, and I just want to make you aware of, so you'll know what we found out after we put it together and looking at it and discussing it. The state highway maintenance contract, 33-440, shows a deficit of 23,000. That has accidentally been put into other state highway funds, 33-559 on the other side, and you'll notice it's over 33, so that pretty well equals out. So that money was just accidentally deposited into the wrong account when it came in, we're going to fix that. At the top of the second page, at 33-553, state gasoline inspection fee of $25,000. We've called everybody and their brother trying to find out what that is, and nobody knows what it is, so I don't know, I don't know where that came from to be projected as a line item revenue. We've spoken to the auditors, we've spoken to MTA's, I mean, trying to find out what that would be and where we could look for that, and nobody knows what it is, so I don't know what to tell you on that one. In miscellaneous, the very last one, 36-990, that was budgeted as 23,500 in revenue, but according to Julia, that is monies that wash. It comes in, it goes back out. Like, if you overpay something, and we have to give you a refund, that goes in miscellaneous. So that $5,863 are monies that came in, but we paid them right back out to people as refunds or rebates or whatever. And that, she said that, the auditor said that should never have been put in as revenue. We've got 23,500 in projected revenue, but she said that any revenue that comes in on that is a wash, so you should never use it as projected revenue. So that, you know, that was a big hit on, those two things were big hits. The state gasoline fee of 25,000 that nobody knows anything about, and the miscellaneous of 23,500, pretty well creates your deficit. Other than those two things, it would have been in the black. Overall, some light items are way over, some are way under, so they're there for you to look at, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
So, essentially, if we hadn't got the extra money from NUB and the high collections on delinquent taxes, we could have conceivably been 288,000 in the hole.
Yeah, we would have been, yeah, that's correct. That saved our bacon. That saved us, yeah, that coming in saved us. I met with Robert Brandon and the officers of the Friends of the Animal Shelter yesterday for two and a half hours. He said to relay to you all, he will not be coming tonight, because I have resolved his issues to his satisfaction for the time being. They raised a lot of issues that they want looked into at the animal shelter, I made the list, I am going to look into them, and they also have concerns about the budgeting process, and I told them that I share their concerns, and we're going to try to work on that in the budget process, to look at, trying to come up with something that we can all agree on, that we can all be happy with. The last thing that I have is the, it's in what's in your packet, it's about the TML Conference in Memphis on June 22nd. If any of y'all that are interested in going, get with Jessica, and she'll get you set up and ready together.
What was the date, Turi?
It starts on June 22nd, I think it lasts for three days. That's all I've got, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Number six, appointment of boards, commissions, and committees. Turi, all that to you.
Well, the first appointment we have to consider is the Newport Utility Board seat of Bill Lewis, it's vacant due to his term inspiring. I think the Vice Mayor is ready to take nominations to that position, and soon we have nominations, we will vote on it. For the public and the board's information, it will take three votes to appoint a member to the board.
Do we need to announce all the names first, or...
Well, we did take names of people who were applying for the position, I don't know if we have a list of those. If you're interested, we interviewed those last week, those who were present and said they were interested in, and there were a couple of people who didn't attend the meeting whose names were submitted, but it's my opinion, the board has the authority to appoint anyone who's qualified to fill the position. And to be qualified, you have to be able to vote in the city of Newport, which means you must be a property owner.
All those names are in your packet. Underneath, underneath the tab of boards and committees.
You want to raise them all, or you don't want to raise them all? This appointment starts this month?
Yes.
Yes.
It would, it'll start immediately, and they'll need to be at the next meeting.
Next meeting.
I'll be glad to read off the names. Von Moore submitted four names, who are county commissioners, Michael McCarter, Dan Medcalf, Clayton Skip Ellison, and Jimmy Lindsay. Dennis Thornton submitted his name to be under consideration. Bill Lewis submitted a letter stating he'd like to be considered. Don Large submitted a statement saying he'd like to be considered, and Kathy Hope submitted a statement saying she would like to be considered. As a sideline, I think the board needs to understand, and the public, if Ms. Hope were to be elected, she would serve for the period of the alderman, just like the two present aldermen, serve only for the remaining balance of their term. And the other two aldermen's term will end when their term as alderman ends.
There's three on it.
There's three?
Three on it.
There's three right now, yes, sir, excuse me. There's three, and those three are serving until their term ends with the next election, and were she to be appointed, her term would end at that time, as would all the other three. Otherwise, the other appointments will be for a six-year term. It's complicated, but that's the way the charter reads.
So we just need to take nominations?
Yes.
I'll open the floor up, I take nominations. I nominate Bill Lewis back to the board. I nominate Bill Lewis. You want to take all nominations first?
Yes.
Okay, any other nominations? If you have any more, nominate. I'd like to nominate Kathy Hope.
Kathy Hope's name has been nominated by...
Any more nominations?
You nominate Kathy.
Yeah. There's no more nominations, opposed nominations, voting.
So we need to vote on the first person nominated, which would be Bill Lewis, and we need a roll call.
Vice Mayor Costner?
No.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Greg?
No.
Alderwoman Hope?
No.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes. So he only received two votes, so right now he would not be appointed, so next we need to vote on Kathy Hope.
Vice Mayor Bill Costner?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
No.
Alderman Greg?
No.
Alderwoman Hope?
Yes.
Kenny Morgan?
No.
So she only received two votes, so we don't have anybody nominated yet. We can keep going, we can consider somebody else. I think you got, we got the floor for any other nominations?
No floor for nominations, then. Nobody going to make nominations. Can I make a statement? Yeah. I'd like to see Kathy have this position, I think it'd be good for you, but if we put Kathy on that, we have four city council members on there, why would we have the Newport Utility Board? I mean, that's, we're going to be in control out there, we're going to be in control here. It does make a lot of sense to me, why we have... There's a lot of places that UTEA's run by the city. Right, I agree. And we need to watch the money. But we're still going to be being a board that is really controlled by the city council. So you all have a question? I mean, that's just my opinion.
So you're saying they're way to board?
If we're going to, my opinion is, if we're going to have four city council members on there... I nominate Dan Medcalf.
Okay.
Anybody else want to nominate anybody else? Any more nominations?
I'm going to nominate Mr. Large.
Mr. Don Large. Anybody have any more nominations? I like the idea of a COB member being on, I like that, but again, if we're going to put four city council members on there, we need to do away with the Newport Utility Board, and I don't think it's a good idea for us. We've got enough problems right now with what we've got going on.
I agree, my biggest concern would be if you have four, and we all come off at the same time, then the next city council would have to immediately appoint four brand-new members, essentially, to city council, I mean, to the utility board, and that, there's an acclamation period, and I think anybody that sits up here knows, there's an acclamation period in any board, and you're talking about four people would be relatively moved to that. I'm not disagreeing with what I'm saying. That's my opinion.
Okay, anybody else?
We got two more.
We got two more, any other nominations?
Dan Medcalf and Don Large.
And of course, they would serve for a six-year term, because they're not members of the city council, for either of them to be elected.
Can we nominate the next two, or do we have to have two minutes?
No, we can, you can nominate somebody.
I'll nominate Kathy again.
Okay. You can sure do it.
You can still nominate, this nomination. It's open to anybody else. Any more nominations? Now, what did you just do?
Renominate Kathy Hope.
I nominate Bill Lewis. Is that fine?
That's fine.
Any more nominations?
I'm going to make a suggestion, after this, we just vote for the one we're going to vote for, and if they get three votes, they get three votes, and if we don't, then we stop sitting here and debating this back and forth, do we?
Okay.
That's my suggestion, Vice Mayor, I, this is, it'll be silly in a minute if we don't.
Roll call.
For Mr. Dan Medcalf, Vice Mayor Costner?
No.
Alderman John Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Freddie Greg?
No.
Alderwoman Kathy Hope?
No.
Alderman Kenny Morgan?
No.
For Don Large, Vice Mayor Costner?
No.
Alderman Bug?
No.
Alderman Greg?
Yes.
Alderwoman Hope?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
He has three votes.
Three votes. Don, wait until the moment.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You'll get a packet of the day, when we're having meetings and everything, we'll send you a packet. Kenny's chairman, he'll make sure you get all the information.
Mr. Large, Glenn Ray's sitting behind you, he'll get your information, the general manager. Glenn, do you hold your hand up, please, just so Mr. Large knows to get that information, so he'll have his packet.
Be the point of Mitchell Way up to Newport Housing Authority to replace the seat of Mr. Almonds.
It's the mayor's.
Mayor's, the mayor does the point.
Oh, we're doing, it's for confirmation.
It's the formal, all in favors. I have a motion sent, Mr. Way.
I'll make the motion, I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Report from committees and members of council, note of Lieutenant Presidency Alliance, Roland Dykes III, Chair.
Captain in the council. Sorry I missed the last meeting or two, hadn't been able to furnish you an update on our activities, but I'd be honest with you, we haven't done a whole lot in the last couple months, except continue to fundraise. We've been moderately successful in trying to raise funds, but we've also recently joined the National Trust for Historic Preservation, which is an organization, as I said, it's a national organization that does provide grants for just the kind of thing that we're trying to do, which is get this building back in use and preserve it as national historic landmark. We're seeking those grants now. We've also been in touch, or I have been in touch, with one of their, with one of their experts, and an architect with that trust that does this for a living. There, I spoke to Mr. Fincham a little while ago, brief conversation, and I think there is some bit of discrepancy in terms of what it would cost to redo, to get this building back up to code, and we're hoping that we can get some information from them and from the council in terms of how we can go about the best way, and the least expensive way to get it done. Before the departure of Mr. Collins, we had discussed forming a committee to do, to kind of, I guess, go about looking at ways, and the easiest way to get this done, and maybe explore different avenues of what has to be done in the building. And briefly, did speak to Mr. Fincham, I think he's in agreement that we could still do that, but there's probably going to be quite a bit more work involved than we anticipated in the beginning.
Mr. Black, I need to get the show going, I'm walking out, I need my beauty glasses.
All right, no problem, thanks, great.
Please, sir.
Hopefully, we can get, we can go ahead and form that committee with the guys' permission and with cooperation, Mr. Fincham and his office. If we can do that, I think we could probably expedite a lot of the things that we need, that need to happen in order to get that taken care of. One thing I think we would like to have is maybe be added to the discussion in the next month's workshop, so that we can get a feel for exactly, you know, what the council is feeling, and how you guys, what we're going, what's going to happen going forward in terms of getting the building renovated. But to do that, I think we also would like to find a way to get, gain access to the building, so that, I know, Mr. Finch said he did a walkthrough with his architect, we'd like to be able to do the same thing with the architect from the National Trust, and some other resources that we have, been in contact with that do this on a regular basis. I don't know what it would take to get that.
Are you on permission now? Are you on permission now?
Not necessarily, but if you are willing to grant permission...
Carlene had already spoke to me about doing it, and I told her that we'd work that out, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, that's easy enough. But, yeah, we don't know exactly when he's going to be, he had mentioned it would probably be two to three weeks out, so hopefully before the next workshop, we can have him here and let him do his walkthrough, and give us an idea of what he thinks. and give us an idea of what he thinks in terms... as opposed to the estimate that we've got from Mr. Fincham from... was it Mr. Brady? Okay, all right. Did you? Okay, yeah, we'd love to see those, if you don't mind. Beyond that, you know, I think that's about all we have going on so far. Kathy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, we're still awaiting our final grant.
I think we're... as an organization, I think we're formally pretty much done. So we're able to do quite a few things that we weren't able to do in the beginning, but we expect that this is gonna... hopefully, it's gonna be moved forward a little bit quickly than we anticipated. Obviously, you guys have a lot more on your plate than the Tannen Building. We understand that it may not be your top priority right now, but we're still working and still willing to do whatever we can to get this taken care of and get it back in use. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you. That's been an old business. Okay, new business. I'll turn this over to our lawyer.
Yes, sir. The first item is the Consideration of Ordinance Number 2013-9. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Newport's budget for the fiscal year 2012-2013 to modify the Newport Grammar Schools budget concerning the General Fund, Capital Projects Fund, and the Federal Fund. And of course, this will be the first reading. We'll need a public hearing on that at the next meeting and a second reading. So we need a motion.
I need a motion for this order, 2013-9?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I'll make the motion.
I have a second. Second, you want?
No, I'm not second.
Got a second? Ken? Well, I'll second. All in favor, say aye. Well, we need a roll call for that.
Just for clarification purposes, Mr. Fincham. This is just housekeeping, right?
Correct, that's my understanding, yes.
That's what was told.
That's what I was told, so I'm like you. I'm taking their word for it.
It requires, as I was told, no new funds.
At the end of the year, we do this similar every year.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do it for us next month, so.
Got it down there, roll call since it's Monday? Roll call.
Alderman Bugg?
I changed my mind, yes.
Vice Mayor Costner?
Yes.
Alderman Holt?
Yeah.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, third.
And the next item is a resolution. And this is to reconsider the resolutions we passed at the call meeting. If council will recall, it's the financial people told us that we needed to do this at a regular scheduled meeting, and this is the exact resolutions we passed at the call meeting. We just need to redo them. And the first one is 2013-7, an initial resolution authorizing the issuance not to exceed $5,534,000 of general obligation bonds for the City of Newport, Tennessee. And as council will recall, we were advised that this in no way obligates the city to borrow that amount of money. It just gives the authority to the city... for the city to go forward if we decide that we want to borrow the money.
Okay. I have a motion to set this resolution.
I'll make the motion.
I have a second. I'll second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bugg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Costner?
Yes.
Alderman Holt?
No.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
And again, the second one is a Resolution 2013...
They need to clear that fast.
Yes.
Okay, it passed with three votes?
Three to one vote.
Three to one.
Thank you, sir. The second item is a consideration of adopting Resolution 2013-8. Again, this is another resolution authorizing the issuance of the general obligation bond anticipation notes in the aggregate amount not to exceed $5,534,000 for the City of Newport. So we need a motion and a second and a vote on that resolution.
I have a motion.
I'll make the motion again.
I have a second.
This is not saying we're gonna borrow it five million, right?
No, sir, no.
I'll make that motion, thank you.
Roll call.
Alderman Bugg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Costner?
Yes.
Alderman Holt?
No.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Passed again. All this is, if we decide to go forward, we can do it, but this is really not obligating us for anything, 'cause we have about, I believe, thirty-seven steps we have to go through before we can get any money. This is keeping it alive in case we... in case we decide to do it.
And then, Vice Mayor, the third one is consideration of a Resolution 2013-9, a resolution authorizing the issuance of one or more general obligation bonds in aggregate power amount not to exceed $5,534,000 of the City of Newport, Tennessee to finance a library and other public buildings, making the provision for the issuance and sale of said bonds in the levy of tax under certain conditions and authorizing the issuance of bond anticipation notes.
I have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Bugg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Costner?
Yes.
Alderman Holt?
No.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
It passed again. Three to one. Okay, E is consideration of showcase on the river. Date change, and that's changed from August 17th to August the 10th.
Yes, sir. As we discussed at the workshop, we have talked to people involved. We've looked at conflicts on that date. The primary one on the 17th being the Cock County Fair. And it's the committee's recommendation that we move that back a week to the 10th, and we've looked, and we're not in conflict with anything. Bristol Race or the Tax Free Shopping Day. We looked at all those things that were going on at various weekends in August. And the 10th, we're not in competition with anything. And since you all had set the date, only you all had to vote to move it. So we just... The committee is requesting that y'all move that back a week if it's your pleasure.
I have a motion to move the date. I have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes aye. It'll be moved from 17th to the 10th.
Thank you.
And there's no bids, purchase, or expenses? No... Any comments from citizens?
Oh, excuse me, before we move on to that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed one.
Okay, and then we added one. We added the issue of...
Doos.com.
Government auction.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'm sorry. F, discuss identification of City of Newport vehicles and equipment.
Mr. Morgan, I have Mr. Morgan ask that be put on.
We discussed at the workshop. I just think they need to be identified with exception of the police department. Obviously, they have to do things that are... where they require unmarked cars. I'll make the motion, Mr. Vice Mayor, that we do what this says on here, which is mark the cars with exception of police.
The motion is to mark all cars except the police department.
Or vehicles.
Or vehicles.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, about the equipment, last two.
I think it only...
All these... Everything needs to be marked.
With exception of the cars and police.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
I'll be second.
Okay, we have a second?
Now, before I second something, and I know I wasn't at the workshop, what are you talking about identifying the car? I mean, most cars have a little... I mean, they have a little magnetic sticker on them. I don't understand what you want.
I'm asking for them to be permanently identified, which is that same thing that be permanently put on the cars, because some people are putting them on Johnny, some are not, and I don't think it's... they all need to be identified with exception of the cars at the police department, obviously, so.
Do you think that the vehicles are going places that they don't need to go?
I just think we need to identify them. I have heard things, and obviously, I think anybody sitting on the permanent city council has heard that cars are used for everything under the sun except for city business. So it's my intention that we mark them so that they're clearly identified as city-owned property. Same thing with the equipment, so that it's... we know that it's owned by the city with exception of the police department.
All the police department?
No, all the police department, no.
What it said, unmarked police cars.
I'm gonna get the staple on anyway. Ken has to identify on their trucks.
I think before we vote on something, we gotta come up with something that... Who... Who do you want identified? Do you want the street department identified? You want everybody but the police department, or what? I don't understand. If you think somebody's gonna cheat, put a GPS on the car. Then how well you know with that?
I got a motion on the floor, and I have a second.
I'm not clear with it.
Do you want to explain what we discussed, or?
What Mr. Morgan discussed with me was that the...
We did it at the workshop, so I don't want Johnny to feel like he's...
Yeah, well, what... Of course, what he's talking about doing is putting a permanent DCL on all city vehicles except for the unmarked cars at the police department. And of course, the unmarked cars at the police department, we talked about all the uses for them. You know, you need to be able to... we park and observe places where the drug houses and their clients drive by and where... 'cause you can't hide it. You have to hide in plain sight in town. There's no... You can't... There's not woods you can hide in and stuff. When you're in the middle of town, you have to be able to hide in plain sight to a certain extent. If somebody's... If we get calls of somebody kinda messing around cars in a parking lot, we can sneak up on them in an unmarked car. I mean, those kinds of things is why... You know, it's why we'd ask... And of course, the chief wasn't here that night, and he's as qualified than me.
Not to be detective cars, wouldn't it?
Right, yeah. Well, any of the unmarked cars. We use them all at various times. As I mentioned at the last meeting, there's been instances where we had as many as four unmarked cars watching one location because of the angles that you get at where it was partially blocked from any one location. And you have to kind of go all around the area and find spots where you can hide to try to watch. And again, you're having to hide in plain sight. So... And if you go back and you look... I didn't bring this up last time, but of course, I've thought about it since we had the last meeting, like anything, dwell on it. If you go and look as far as an industry standard, and I know law enforcement is not an industry per se, it's a profession, but that's just a common term. If you go to any police department or sheriff's department, their unmarked cars are not marked. I mean, by definition, if you mark it, it is no longer a marked... an unmarked car. So that is just not an industry standard in law enforcement that you mark an unmarked car.
Here's my thought. Let's say that I go ahead and do what I'm supposed to do, but when it comes up, I don't want something to come to me and say, "We have approved this," and then they come up and say that the chief of police has to have a marking on his car. He don't have to have a marking on his car, right?
Well, that... As I understand Mr. Morgan's motion, it excluded all police unmarked vehicles.
It excludes the police department.
I'll take the motion.
And the only thing I would add that to Johnny's discussion is that outside the police department, why would we not want any of the cars marked? I mean, you want the city cars identified. I mean, otherwise, why would you ever not want them marked?
I understand.
No, I'm talking about the... I agree with you, that's what I'm saying.
If a chief... If the fire department chief comes into a place on fire, you need to know that's who that is. Or if the Bronx Recreation man comes in or a street department man comes in, you need to know that's who he is. I have no problem with that. I just take the motion, then.
The county authorities always wrote this up, all the vehicles are supposed to be marked in the county, and I wouldn't see any difference in the city except for the police department. And I don't believe it's just gonna affect about four or five vehicles anyway.
It's my understanding there's only about that many that are currently unmarked. I mean, as far as outside the police department, city vehicles.
You got the fire department, and it'd be the recreation. That's... And then I've seen our code force. He's got a new car, and he's got a sign on, so.
Of course, Mr. Morgan, I think his issue is those are the magnetic signs, and he wants to switch over to permanent. And as I understood him, I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, but I think he was looking at doing the city logo as a DCL and putting that on, and then maybe some wording above or below defining the department.
However you wanna do that, James, that's your decision, but my motion would be to permanently mark all vehicles that the city owns and that includes equipment with the exception of the police department. That's my motion.
You got a motion, you second, John?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Bugg?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Costner?
Yes.
Alderman Kathy Holt?
Yeah.
Now, what else you have?
Yes, Vice Mayor, we added to the agenda the suggestion that we give the city administrator the authority to go forward with an online auction of surplus city equipment. And to do that, we need a motion and a second.
I have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Thank you, we'll move forward to that.
Comments from citizens?
Ms. Lamont? Wait. What is it, other building under item nine D? Other public buildings?
What'd you say, Lena?
Under new business number nine, item D, you have other public buildings. Mine has a library and other public buildings. What is that?
Well, that was initially thought to add to the present city hall here.
And we voted that out.
No, I don't... I'm gonna disagree there. I don't think that money was marked for anything to do at City Hall.
No, that was in the...
I think that original... Daniel, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I interrupted you, I apologize. That money was in the original note that was borrowed to... that we bought the five beer joints out of. About $120,000 of that was earmarked for renovations at City Hall, and it's my understanding that you all later rescinded that project.
Yes, we voted that out.
Yes. But that... Yeah, that is not this, and I do not have an answer for that. I don't know why that's in there.
Does that satisfy your amendment?
I think that...
I haven't heard an answer.
Well, I think that was why that was in the original resolution, even though the city has decided at the present time not to go forward with that issue. And that being struck? Or do we need to move? And that being struck, or do we need to move?
I, I don't think it matters, because we haven't gone forward and made any-
We voted to do well with that, a hundred and twenty thousand. That's what that was for, but we, we didn't approve it. Is that satisfying now?
Yeah, you may want to vote on that again, Dan, if you're gonna edit that.
We, we edited it, voted, we have a vote on it, or did we?
We voted not to spend any money.
To spend, I, I thought we did.
To pay for the, uh, any additions at the city hall at the present time.
Well, it's, the like with any note that you do, it's, essentially, it's a line of credit. And if you don't spend it, then you don't borrow it. You know, what, what this does, this allows you to borrow up to 5.5 million dollars. You can borrow four, if that's what you spend. So, that's, you know, this, this is a maximum line of credit. It doesn't mean that they're gonna, I've used this analogy three or four times, it's not like getting your paycheck on Friday. They don't give you a check for 5.5 million dollars, now you spend it any way you want to. You draw the money down as you use it, then if you don't need it, you don't draw it down, and you don't owe it and have to pay it back.
Okay. Ms. Lamont, like I said, she's safe.
I just have a question. Other than item D, resolution to go for thing nine, it says making provision for the issuance and sale of state of bonds and levy of tax under certain conditions. What conditions?
Yeah, that's it.
Is that just, might be the standard form, I don't know. Our lawyer, he, he doesn't know.
Can we check on it to make sure this is work in process?
Okay.
I'll try to have an answer for you there by the next meeting.
Mr. Morgan?
Well, one comment. This other building thing, was to keep two years, three years, four years, five, this board may change. Then somebody says, "You know, we're going to build other buildings. Sell bonds to build other buildings." If, if you're not gonna do it, why not strike that?
Right.
Strike that from the resolution and be done with it. Because if you don't, if he change, if he changes, it takes time. Somebody's gonna say, "Well, that's not what we voted on last time." I mean, if, if you leave a word out, you know what I'm saying? So, to do it officially, if you're not gonna do other buildings, take it out.
That's what the council wants to do, you can do that.
I think if you strike it out completely, and you decide to fix the tanner bill with some monies, I'm just gonna throw this out there that-
Could use another minute.
Mr. Brady's here, is, that money's close to build a library. Is that accurate number? That's not any excess monies or anything else? That was a projected amount to build a library, is that correct?
Right, that's what I understood all this did. So, it's for the library.
Now, I'm not against changing lanes, but I think that if Mr. Mason is absolutely correct, only it's a line of credit, and we get down to where this board or the next one votes to fix the tanner bill, and we spent five million, you got three hundred thou- or any building. City hall, fire department, the community center, anything else, then you can break it back up.
You can spend what you-
I don't like the, the, the vagueness of it either, Linda, but-
But if you wanna put the tanner bill in, you ought to say tanner bill, not other building. I don't think you meant that money to be designated.
Now, don't you say me, Linda, cause that ain't, I didn't say you. I'm attempting to answer your question. I know, I know.
But they had, they had this.
I would ask, on Linda's behalf, that we get the legal opinion on that theory for the next meeting, if we need to reword that, then we need to-
I will. Put it back on the gen-
If you wanna do it, that excess for tanner, good tanner.
We can, we'll put it in the next meeting, we'll have it in there, or, or he'll have the explanation, because it has to be on the gen if we vote anyway, or we have to spend rules.
Yes.
So, is that okay, we, we wait the next month?
You voted on it, are you gonna rescind your vote? You already voted on it.
We already voted on it tonight, but we can rescind it the next meeting. We'll bring it, we'll have it on the gen.
You know, you get stupid, trucker in the yard, and you get very precise with it.
But a lot of times, uh, it's just wording, when they go borrow it, that's just in the process. But like you said, you made a good point, but I'm quite sure, like what Kenny says, that we spent this five million, it comes out, we spent five, had three hundred thousand, when you say other buildings, we could take the other three hundred then, without going to a process where we have to turn the money back in. Cause when you borrow money and designate for that, that's where it's gotta go, and you can't move it. But, but putting other buildings in there, if you got some left, you can move it without going to a whole new process and use that money. And I believe that's what it is, but like-
We're not proceeding with anything until you come up with-
Like they told us, we got thirty-three steps to go. This just keeps it live, and we, we don't know if we're gonna do this, it depends on our finances, and we'll have to see how it goes before we borrow anything, but this just keeps it going.
I understand that.
Okay, anybody else has anything else?
If it's gonna be designated tanner, would you add that place?
Okay, we, if, if, we'll let James handle this and Terry, and we'll have it in the next meeting. Mr. Allen?
Couple questions. Daniel Ray, I'll, or we just borrow it, late budget, or higher recovery. One of my questions is, why would you even consider this? Where are you gonna come up with the money to make payments on this? That's another two hundred fifty thousand dollar gearing budget. Where'd that gonna come from? And the second question, I asked at last meeting, when do I expect to get a raise up to what the new hire is making?
Be honest with me, I can't answer your question on that.
I've been with city three years, not complaining, I was out of jobs. Just hiring people straight off the street, making three dollars a hour, no one had money.
That come back to our city administrator. We don't have no control over.
I asked Julie about that after the last meeting where Willie brought that up, and she says that is not the case. I have not looked at the numbers myself, but, uh, she said that his nu, that his number is where, that is where everybody else is, is what I was told. Now, I didn't get a copy of everything and compare it myself, but I did ask about it after he brought that issue up last time.
One, as a city employee, you know what you make? I would encourage you to have that discussion with him.
What?
I would encourage you to have that discussion with the city administrator.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know how to go about it, I mean, that's, that's my, I don't know.
Cause we, we don't set the pay.
We don't set pay, it's the city administrator.
I have this question I have. Daniel can call and answer, I'll go see Daniel.
I'll be glad to get a copy of the, of this, of what everybody makes and look and, and compare, but I was told that he is comparable to the other people that's doing the same job he is. Now, one thing to keep in mind, and I'm, this is pure speculation, uh, there are a lot of job descriptions within each department, and your pay is based on your job description. And if somebody comes in that, like I say, and this has not been done, but this for the sake of argument, if somebody, if you hire somebody to be a mechanic at the street garage, he's gonna come in making more than somebody that already works there in another job that has less technical responsibility. And so, uh, sometimes you have people come in that do a different job, that requires more responsibility or more technical ability, and that job pays more than the job you're in. And then, you know, and, and I think a lot of times, that's where this kind of confusion gets in. And I don't know if that's the case with this, I'm just throwing that out there as an example of how that can happen. I will check deeper into it tomorrow.
Thank you, James.
Would you like to answer the first question?
As far, uh, no, because you all have asked me that same question, and I can't answer it for you, so if I can't answer it for you, I can't answer it for him. Uh, that is a, that is one of the works in progress that we're working on. The revenue report that I gave you tonight is another step in that direction, we're gonna start tomorrow and working on the grant revenue. Um, we, it, it's all a process. And, uh, I tell you, basically, what we're gonna be looking at is, once we get all the revenue squared away, and this is, this that I gave you tonight is your revenue stream, and it's not the grant monies, it's not loan monies, it's not insurance, uh, recovery monies, it's strictly your, your core streams and, and processes and modes of revenue that you get, that you rely on every year. And so, you can see where that is. The only way that, that we're gonna get to a bottom line is to work out the whole process, to look at everything we brought in, everything we have spent, uh, where it looks like we're gonna be at the end of this year, and then start on our budget for next year, and see where we are then. Then we can see what kind of discretionary funds we have to put into any project, whether it be the library, whether it be raises for the employees, whether it be paving the streets, capital improvements there, regardless, of whatever it is that you all choose that you wanna spend your money on. Until we know how much money we've got, and how much we can speculate and project that we're going to have, you, you really can't say, "Yeah, we're gonna do this, this, and this, or we're not gonna do that," cause at this point, I can't tell you because I don't know. And it's, it is a, I know I keep using this phrase, it's a moving target, and it's a work in progress. Uh, as soon as I know, you'll know. That, but what I gave you today was printed off at three o'clock today. And so, it, it's a tremendous amount of information that has to be sifted through to come up with this stuff, because it has not been tracked. It had not, it has not been followed, maintained, and kept up with. And so, we have had to generate all this stuff from scratch, and that, I mean, I'm not trying to make excuses, I'm just explaining to you what we're dealing with. And when you have to do that, when you, and this, the software that we have, and we have the government software that is a standard, but it is not user friendly. When you try to, you cannot just search stuff with it, you have to print out stacks of paper that thick and sort through it, and it is not user friendly in the least. And the girls have, have worked hard, they took stuff home and worked on it, and I mean, you can, for moving these faces, we can move with trying to sort through the amount of information we've got to sort through, and with what we've got to deal with to get to that point.
Last question, James, on the financing for the, the refinancing, that, where are we at with that?
Uh, on that, I have a reg, they sent me a packet, I have looked at it, he has put, he's gonna come and talk to us about that. Uh, but he has put a proposal together on, on consolidating those variable rate loans, and getting us into a fixed rate, and get that monkey off our back before those rates start to go up. He, he has put a packet together, but like some of this stuff, there's so much technical wording, and fifteen pages of graphs, and charts, and numbers, and, uh, you know, he's gonna have to explain all that. They, they, I think they do that on purpose, where they have to explain it where you can't understand it without them. But we do have a, he does have a proposal for it.
Does that, is that satisfying now? Will you just get with James? Cause like I said, we don't have, that's a process, we don't have enough to, except to our administrator. Ms. Lamont, you have another question?
Yeah, well, just touching on, I'm working on, and I'm glad James is gonna do it, and I know, I bet Mr. I've been to the courthouse. I've bought the tax bills on the properties that I think are being done. Obviously, the city is going to lose tax dollars on the properties that have long receiving on tax. I have the place ready for property. James gave me the names and the amounts of the properties that are sold. The calculation I made is we're talking about a nine million dollar library, finally it's over forty years. That then include the top one six, the city is using to part the property, so I'm preparing which to build to you all, knowing the question, how we gonna pay for? Cause you're gonna lose tax dollars. I wonder how you're gonna stay up, a building that size, I don't think, the current library has to sell cookbooks to pay the light bill. And I don't know if they can sell enough cookbooks to make things. I've got a lot of questions about the building. But I have this information, I bought the tax bills, I got the documentation, and I will submit that to you to be used at quarter time in your evaluation before you perform this process, so I'll give it to you, and you don't have to do anything. I will.
That's the reason we're going through this process.
Now, where'd you come up with nine million dollars? I'm just curious.
Two hundred seventy-two thousand, over forty years.
That's the payback.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's the reason, John, we, we're, we got James, we're, we're seeing if we can really afford it, but all this is, keep it going, cause we checked the financing, the guy's working with James, said it's thirty-three steps, said don't stop, said keep it, and if it comes to a point, we can take it or not, cause if, we're working on figures now, see if we can afford, we can't afford it, it won't be built. But that's, uh, we're, we're trying.
Together, and I just asked her to be used, and she said.
Well, we're working with financial, we're working with James, that's, that's what we're concerned about, too.
I, I told John I'd be interested in seeing the numbers myself.
I mean, it's, this is not in concrete, it is, we're working on it. And it might not, like I said, it might not go, but we, at least we need to tire some of his old buildings down before they fall in and hurt somebody. You know, we can always resell the property.
The only thing I, the only thing I cause my, my, my-
Well-
James gave me all the names and the amount-
Well, everything we've done's been upfront so far. I don't reckon being nothing under the table, far as I know. Okay, anybody else gain comments?
I'd like to, I'd like for us to recognize our new NUB manager, William Glenn Ray, cause stand up, Glenn, that's, we just, we just-
I couldn't see you back there.
Put him in last month, was he? Okay? And this is a-
He's been there.
They call a good old boy, that's a good old boy. Four weeks or something. I make the most money.
Okay, wait, nope. Randy?
This, this hasn't got anything to do with, with borrowing a bunch of money or anything. The, the Fire Fighter Association Golf Tournament is June third. Anybody'd like to play, or like to sponsor a tee box, anything like that, call the fire department, and we'll try to get you involved. That's it.
Sorry about that.
Do you know what time it is?
Uh, we should tee, we'll, should tee off at night. On June third. Contact me, I'll make sure you know.
Any other comments from citizens? I hear a motion, Jerry?
I may want.
I'll say it. That might-